Good afternoon. Today is July 2nd, 2018, 3:00 PM. And you are part of the Rowan County Commission meeting. We are honored that you're here today and we hope that you find your time productive. It has been the tradition of this board and boards all across America. Clear back to our founding that we begin with a couple of things. One of them is we're going to have a prayer to start us off. This is called a solemnizing prayer. These prayers are for the commissioners and nobody else. And so we'll have our chaplain come forward. After that, we have a special guest with us today, Mr. Henry Behringer. And he is in the scout troop number 315. He's working on a merit badge and he has his family here with him today. And I've asked him if he would honor us by opening our pledge. So as soon as our prayer is done, then we'll have Mr. Behringer come up and get us started. So commissioners, if you'll join me.
Lord, we thank you for this day you blessed us with and we thank you for the privilege that we can come today and pray for the county commissioners, Lord. And thank you for their dedication service to this county, dear Lord. I pray you continue to give them the wills they need and you'll bless them, dear Lord. And those who are here today, as we conduct the business today, we will always keep in mind of doing that and what is right, dear Lord. And thank you for the privilege we have to be here, Lord, and thank you for this county that we live in, dear Lord. And thank you to many people we've got to be able to know and see their dedication and love for this county also. Guide us and direct us now, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge will be taken to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Henry, and thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? additions or deletions? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda then?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have the minutes that have been provided for us for the June 4th, 2018 work session and June 18th, 2018. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a large consent agenda provided for us. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda is provided?
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, let me see. We've got an announcement. Glad communities are taking us up on that. On July 21st, beginning at 9:00 AM, the town of China Grove has their annual Farmer's Day. I don't know if you've ever been to that. It's typically the hottest day on the planet. So dress legally, but wears a little. I'm just not even going there. I just don't even know why I started down that road. But dress to your level of comfort and also remain legal. And bring lots to drink, but they've got, it's a great event. They close down the streets. They've got vendors from all over the region that are there. It's a great day. There's music all day long and at night and concerts. So it's on the 21st of July, begins at 9:00 AM. And so help out our local municipalities by going and supporting them. All right, anyone sign up for public?
Yeah, we have one. In the meantime, item J on the consent agenda, the offer for lot seven. I'm assuming the approval of that would authorize Carolyn to run a public notice for upset bid. And then we'll bring it back to you after no upset bids have been posted.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what we understood.
All right.
Thank you. A newcomer to the county commission, Mr. Ronnie Smith. Ronnie, welcome back. Good to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, thank you, everybody, for the wonderful job you do. I'll try to be as brief as I can. I know you're on a short agenda and it's July the 4th week, but I would like to start out by saying, this past Friday, June the 29th, I woke up at 4:00 in the morning, turned on Fox News, international news, at 6:30 and got to see my commissioners of Rowan County. You made us very proud of what you did and I just want to take my hat off and thank you and salute you for standing up for Rowan County. I'm here to get you excited again, very, very excited. We've been working on so many projects for so long and we're about ready to achieve, hopefully, a successful result with several of those. Number one, probably the most important, this morning at 10:00, I met with Mayor Al Higgins of Salisbury. And Al promised me verbally their full support for the Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial. I'm proud to present to you, by way of Carolyn, the final proposal for this magnificent project for Rowan County in Salisbury. I know in my three minutes, I certainly don't have time to go over the details, but I will offer that opportunity for questions in the future from anybody, any commissioner, any member of this community. And we are very proud to finally present this to you for your approval. Again, thank you for your tremendous support of that project. Also, I have an exciting announcement. This past Friday, Washington DC called us and said, "We are giving you preliminary approval to go ahead with the expansion of the Salisbury National Cemetery." That's something we've been striving for, for six years. Washington has approved it on a tentative basis. We've got a few papers to sign and we should be able to tremendously increase the size of that cemetery over the next 30 or 40 or 50 years. This is a huge, huge success for Rowan County. People come to that cemetery from all over the southeast and it will be a magnet for this county for many, many years to come. I'm very proud of that. In addition, I'm very proud to announce this. This may be new to some of you. I was at Davidson County meeting last week and Greg, I believe, they said you had attended one of their previous meetings on the Yakton River Park. They are ready to kick that off and they want a collaborative effort with us, Rowan County. We have an opportunity to acquire 160 acres on the river at the Wilcox Bridge and the land trust, Jason Walser and several other of us right now are working diligently to make that happen. If that happens, we have the potential of having one of the finest state or national parks of any state or national park in this area. And that would be a huge, huge plus, in my opinion, for Rowan County. I am so proud to also tell you that of many, many other projects, if you want to in the future, you might be able to walk to work. We just announced a joint project the other day to build a high-rise, a high-rise apartment building two blocks from here in the former K-Town property. This is not public yet, but it is being worked out. And Trenty Oaks, Mr. Ted Goines, if it's successful, will build up to a six-story apartment building two blocks from here and all of you are welcome to be tenants. We're working on that for all the citizens of Rowan County. It's not just Lutheran's, it's everybody. So with that, I'm very proud to excite you. I'm very proud to present this to Carolyn for your review and I want to thank you again for all you do for Rowan County. God bless you and God bless America.
Thank you, Ronnie. This is your favorite week of the year, isn't it? Yes, sir. Yeah, I knew it is. I know it is. Well, thank you for what you do for our community. All right, item number four, Ed.
Good afternoon. The commission directed the planning board to review the current standards for campgrounds and RV parks. A couple of weeks ago, staff forwarded a packet of information to the planning board and it was referred to Committee B for study of future amendments. And since that time, there has been some discussion amongst staff and I think maybe a couple of the commissioners as well to take a little bit longer look at these standards and maybe call timeout for a period of time. And what we've done is prepared a resolution for consideration by this board to enact a six-month moratorium for establishing or expanding campgrounds or recreational vehicle parks in Rowan County's planning jurisdiction. This six-month window will also require an ordinance that's adopted by this commission if you elect to do so. But before doing so, you have to schedule a public hearing and that public hearing would need to occur on August 6th. We'll advertise the hearing two times in compliance with statutory provisions. But if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. The resolution tries to capture the intent of what staff and the board, I think, want to accomplish during this process. Any questions?
Ed, I'd just like to make sure the public knows that at this point in time, there are no applications for new campgrounds.
That's correct. There are none that we have.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ed?
Motion.
Yeah, we'll need a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt the memorial, the moratorium consideration with the amendments currently.
I'll second. Yeah, adopt a resolution to schedule a public hearing for August 6th, 2018 to adopt an ordinance to enact a moratorium on campgrounds and RV parks. Is that what you want? Is that good? And you'll second that?
I'll second it.
All right.
Adopt, amend my motion.
Any further discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ed, very much. Item number five, DHHS and county memorandums of understanding. Donna Faco, welcome, Donna.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
But before you get started, Donna, I'd just like to say thank you and let the board know what a good job Donna's done. She's the president of the North Carolina Social Services Board and this is, the presentations she's getting ready to make is important and it could really adversely affect the county if we don't take the steps that she's recommending. And she's just done an excellent job along with Jay in coming up with the solution. And as you, so we go through it, you'll see what I mean. It's fairly complicated, but she's done an excellent job. So thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Erin. Well, good afternoon. I am Donna Faco and I'm the DSS director here in Rowan County. I'm here to talk with you about the memorandums of understanding between the Department of Health and Human Services and the counties. Session Law 2017-41, which is House Bill 630, Part III, addresses the formulation of local written agreements between DHHS, the department, and counties. It also identifies corrective action and state intervention. So effective for fiscal year 19, which today is the first year, the first day of that year, all counties must enter into these agreements with specified performance measures identified for all social services programs except Medicaid. These performance measures must use reliable data. And those of you who have been around and know about NCFAST and some of the challenges that we've experienced, that is a big deal for counties. We need to have reliable data upon which to be measured. And the administrative responsibilities are also outlined in these agreements that basically identify what the department is responsible for as well as what the counties are responsible for. So I'm going to review those with you. The responsibilities of the department, they are to identify mandatory performance requirements for each social services program in every county utilizing standardized metrics. They are to provide supervision, program monitoring, and technical assistance to the counties. They are to develop strategies that address system-level barriers to the effective delivery of social services programs. They are responsible for staff training and workforce development. They are to develop training curriculum and provide written guidance related to new federal or state statutes or regulations. They are responsible for compliance monitoring. They are responsible to provide counties with reliable data related to the performance measurements. And they are responsible for the maintenance and functionality of its information systems. Regarding communication, the department is responsible for clarification or explanation of law. They are to disseminate policy on social services programs, provide timely information on any changes to federal law, maintain all policies in one centralized location, and communicate with the Department of Social Services Director. Regarding inter-agency coordination, they are to provide guidance to counties on any conflict of interest cases. They are also to provide guidance for emergency management. DSS is responsible for mass shelter operations. Conversely, responsibilities of the county. Counties are required to ensure that their staff attend all required and necessary training. For compliance, they are to perform activities for all social services programs in accordance with law, policy, and procedure. They are to develop and implement internal controls over financial resources and then provide and adhere to corrective action plans as needed. For data submission, they are to maintain accurate records of social services programs and be sure that reliable data is entered into the system. They are to provide that data to the state and then utilize data to drive their decision-making. Regarding communication, they are to notify the department of any situation that may have a potential negative impact on the department arising from social services programs and namely child fatalities is a common situation that they want to be notified of. If there are any changes to the governing board or the county's social services director, that is to be communicated to the department. And then inter-agency cooperation, they are to ensure that their staff complete the mandated training and then operate shelters as needed. So I gave you that background because there are a total, I think I skipped back. Oops. There are 26 performance standards which these MOUs are going to enter into with the counties. And of those 26 performance measures, there are about six that I have concerns about for Rowan County. And the reason that I have concerns is because those performance standards are based on many factors that are beyond the control of the county or because they are relying upon systems collaboration. So I want to talk with you a little bit about those. Issues for consideration as we move forward with these memorandums is that the data sources for these performance measures, of those 26 measures, only the six for child support enforcement have the state been able to identify the data source. So, excuse me. It's very concerning to counties to enter into a memorandum of understanding by which they're going to be held accountable when we do not have the data sources by which to go in and track our performance. So that is a work in progress and it just makes us uneasy and it's something for us to consider. We also are very concerned about the state providing counties with accurate, timely, and reliable data. Again, based upon prior experiences with the Medicaid report card, if you recall, there were six months timeframe where we did not have accurate data, but the legislature was receiving reports about county performance. And so I just want to make sure that moving forward, we have good data by which we are measured. And then some of the performance measures will not be achieved consistently because it involves major system issues involving the core system, the mental health system, poverty and unemployment. We're going to talk a little bit about those. So these are the performance measures that I am particularly concerned about. The first is that the county will provide leadership for ensuring that 41% of children who enter foster care in a 12-month period are discharged to permanency within 12 months of entering foster care. So permanency can be, yes?
Donna, let me interrupt you for one second. For the board to know and for you to clarify, when it says the county will provide leadership, this MOU is required not that the DSS director agree, but that the Board of Commissioners agree.
That is correct. One of the asks today is going to be for the board to determine who the signings authority will be invested with because it has to be someone who can bind the county to these performance requirements. It cannot be the DSS director. And so that, keep that in mind as we're talking about these performance requirements.
Whose idea was this? The General Assembly.
This is House Bill 630 that had so much controversy and how it was brought at a last minute without a lot of discussion and exploration.
So as you hear these requirements, it's not Donna, it's the Board of Commissioners or you can say the county manager can be held responsible, but this is on us. So, sorry.
Yes, thank you. So finding permanence for children in a 12-month period of time, 41% of children who enter foster care, I think we have to take into consideration some things that are impacting our community. The opiate epidemic plagues us pretty severely here in Rowan County. And we know that substance abuse treatment is very highly individualized and it depends upon the individual. There are setbacks and relapses, but recovery is built on access to evidence-based clinical treatment and we don't have a lot of treatment options here in Rowan County. We also know that SAMSS says that one year is not a realistic timeframe for full recovery with substance abuse. So this is a very concerning factor when we look at this 12-month expectation. And then adoptions are rarely, if ever, achieved within a 12-month period. In order for that to happen, the parents would have to relinquish and say, "I'm signing over my child. Here's someone who's already willing and ready to adopt them." They would have to go through all the checks and the processes, but rarely, I've never known an adoption to be finalized within a 12-month time period. And the Adoptions and Safe Families Act requires filing of a termination of parental rights if children have been out of their home for 15 of the most recent 22 months. So there's some incongruencies with what this legislation requires and what federal legislation requires. And then the court system in each county has a large impact on the timing of permanency because there is a series of court hearings that a child has to go through. And if there are continuances in court, because, you know, we have criminal and civil going on at the same time, that we have juvenile court and attorneys can't be to places at one time, so there are continuances that occur. So those impact just that first performance standard. The second performance standard that I'm concerned about is about the rate of placement moves. The children are not to exceed 4.1% of placement moves over 1,000 days in foster care. Again, the children, their behavioral needs, their mental health needs are of utmost concern here. If they have mental health issues and they go into a regular foster home, the foster parents are typically not trained to be able to address their needs. And so they could then be placed into a therapeutic foster home. Well, our system is built upon a child failing up in the system. So if they can't get their needs met in therapeutic foster care, then they have to go through mental health authorization, utilization management review to be able to go into a higher level of care. So our system is not set up to actually support achievement of these performance measures. And then, yes?
So the 4.1%, but isn't that, if the foster parents don't want the child, then they can just release it back? So we don't really have any control at all of that, do we? Are they?
Yes, that is true. And that frequently happens with children who have high behavioral health needs.
Okay. Another question I had is, why are these odd number percentages? Why is it 4.1 or 41%? Why is it not 40 or?
I don't know that I can answer that. These are the percentages that were handed down from DHHS.
Commissioner Kaski, we weren't contacted to respond to any data or suggest an appropriate level that I know of, Donna. Correct me if I'm wrong, that one of the issues with the MOU is that there's not a lot of local input in these standards because we could probably tell them that we could achieve, you know, 31% or 51%. We could tell them what reasonable goals, but we weren't given that opportunity.
That is correct.
So these were just unilaterally sent down.
And then?
On each of these, I mean, do you have an idea where you all are on each of these now?
It depends. We have reaching accountability and performance in a dashboard that we have at the state level through the UNC Jordan Institute, School of Social Work. And right now, I can tell you that the 41% margin, we are at 38%. We're, I think that that is an area that we absolutely have to improve upon. The placement moves, we're doing pretty well with placement moves. I think we're right at 4%. But again, my data sources are not necessarily the data sources that the state is going to use. And so that's one of the concerns that counties have because we have no idea what they're tracking us against. They've given us methodology, but not data sources because they said it's too complex, that they take one data source, then another data source, they cross-reference, dump it into a spreadsheet, and so on and so forth. So we do not know the data source upon which we're being measured.
I'm sure you'll tell us in your presentation what happens if we don't meet these requirements.
I will.
Will you also tell us what the consequences of us refusing to sign this are?
I will.
Good. Excellent.
Donna, before you start back, what was it, three years ago, three and a half years ago, you were having problems moving everything into the new state software. Why would we not have everything on the software and the state use that, which would be the same thing that you had?
We implemented the Food Nutrition Services Program in 2012. We implemented Medicaid in 2014. We've implemented child welfare. Rowan County implemented in March of this year. We do not have accurate reports at all for child welfare and there are only 11 counties currently using the NCFAST system for child welfare. So it's not covering all 100 counties in the state at this point for child protective services. So we can rely upon NCFAST for certain programs that have been in place and that the data has been vetted, but some of the programs, we do not have the system implemented across the counties.
Thank you.
So the third foster care data measurement that I'm concerned about is the reentry where children who have been released or reunified, which means that they've been reunified with their family or with a relative, or if guardianship or adoption has occurred, the performance standard is that 8.3% will not, no more than 8.3% will re-enter foster care within 12 months. And to me, that's a really big burden for DSS or the county to bear because we cannot control human behavior. So if we are, if we must predict future maltreatment, I think that that creates a lot of concern for us. When a child comes into custody, the issues that created that risk and safety have to be identified, have to be addressed in a family services agreement. The family is monitored and reported back to the court system before reunification occurs. So if the department maintains all of those processes and successfully achieves reunification, then within a 12-month period, should a family have a new adult move into the home, a new boyfriend move in with mom who maltreats a child? Or if supervision was the issue and now it's domestic violence, they want us to manage not having any reentries more than 8.3%. So that's going to be difficult for us to manage and be consistent with. Moving on to child support, there are two measures there that I'm concerned about that the county will achieve. It's give an annual percentage of current child support paid and then also receive payments to arrears in a certain percentage of cases. And what you see down there in the corner, that's our local dashboard showing you the collections that we have in child support for this fiscal year. So we do not have June recorded, but you can see that we're $1.1 million away from reaching our goal. There are lots of factors that impact the child support payments. The ability of the non-custodial parent to pay their ordered support is dependent upon them maintaining and sustaining employment, earning a living wage, being willing to meet the obligation. We have difficulty finding non-custodial parents many times. And then if they are in substance abuse treatment or incarcerated or if they're pursuing disability, they're not going to be employed, so therefore cannot make payments. So here's what you might be interested in. Corrective action. If DSS fails to meet these performance requirements or comply with the terms of the agreement, DHHS shall withhold state and federal funds. Now, I'm going to give you some specifics as we go along, but... Now, I'm going to give you some specifics as we go along, but the timeliness that they're looking at is if we fail to meet our performance measures for three consecutive months, or five out of 12 months, then the state's going to come in and take corrective action. And that's when the Secretary of Health and Human Services may intervene. They would notify myself, they would notify you and the county manager, and the DSS board that they were planning to come in and take some corrective action. The actions that they can take is DHHS staff may come in and provide technical assistance and monitoring, which they do on a consistent basis. They may establish a corrective plan of action. If after 60 days, reasonable efforts haven't been made, then state and federal child welfare services administrative funds will be withheld until that particular service comes into compliance. The state pays less than 10% of funding for our child welfare services. So we're talking a chunk of money from the federal government that could potentially be withheld. And then they will also ensure that we, the services are continued to be provided, but they may bring in a contract agency to make sure that those services are provided. They can assume all or part of the DSS operations based upon what the performance measures show. In House Bill 630, they are formulating a regional office for the state to provide supervision to the counties. So the secretary through these regional offices could administer all or part of the program, including supervision of the staff or contracts. The DSS would be divested of administrative authority granted to them through general statute. The county director would be divested of all service delivery powers, and the secretary could assign those powers to a DHHS staff person or a contractor. And the best part is that it will be on the county dime. DHHS will oversee the expenditure of all funding for administration of the components of these programs that have been assumed by DHHS. And we are not able to withdraw any funds that were previously obligated for those services, and DSS will continue to pay the county's non-federal share for the services and the staff portion of administration. The secretary will inform all the boards of what's going on, and then once that DSS comes into compliance and can meet all of their performance requirements, then they can resume the authority of their programs. So before you today, I come to talk with you about the signing authority for these agreements. There will be a six-month implementation window, so the memorandums of agreement become effective today. Rowan County has an approval for an extension to submit it late, and there will be no corrective action until January of 2019. The agreements, and this is in legislation, are between DHHS and the county, not the DSS. So each county is being asked to decide who is the appropriate signatory, who can legally bind the parties to the agreement. I will tell you that many counties are submitting addendums, signing statements, cover letters, resolutions from their board, from their commission, and as of Friday, and Jay, you don't know this yet, as of Friday, the secretary has sent all of those back and said that she will not accept any MOU that has any attachment, that she wants a clean MOU from all counties. Do you have questions of me?
Well, that doesn't mean we can't submit one.
No, sir. Actually, I am seeing email traffic from various counties and county managers that said they feel that they have legally executed the agreement by signing it, regardless of what is attached. And I think that, I think what's before us today, we have to decide how we want to send, if we want to send an attachment, and how we want to send an attachment, either by cover letter, by resolution, by signing a statement. So those, the two things before us today is to decide who you'd like to sign the agreement, and then if we will attach.
Can you explain what the attached memorandum of understanding does?
The signing statement?
No, no, the addendum.
Yes. The addendum actually would just outline our concerns. It's not negating us signing it. We would go ahead and sign the memorandum, but it's just outlining our concerns and asking for things such as additional funding from the state, additional resources to help meet these performance measures, leadership with the administrative office of the courts to manage some different court processes, leadership with DMH to help change some of the mental health challenges that we have in trying to place our children. So those are the things that I'm seeing in these addendums, just outlining our concerns, but not saying that we would not sign it. The secretary's take, and she has consulted with her legal counsel, is that anything other than a clean MOU binds her in agreeing to whatever is in our signing statement or in a cover letter, if she signs it with those addendums.
Is this a state action? Is it federal? State and federal? Is it the DHHS secretary and department? Is it a committee of the House and Senate? Where is this specifically coming from?
The bill sponsors, the primary bill sponsor is Senator Tamara Berengar from Wake County. But there is, you know, the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee, there are members of that who are part of the sponsor for this bill.
It's legislative.
It is legislative.
But it's coming from DHHS. I mean, huh?
Not coming from DHHS.
DHHS opposed the MOU?
No, but they must follow the letter of the law.
Yeah.
They created it, and the secretary is trying to implement it based on her understanding of it.
That's correct.
And what we're saying, I think what Donna's saying, is that we want to submit it with an addendum, and I guess they can, you know, respond back and say, "Well, we don't accept it," but we still feel like we've...
Well, Donna, don't you think the idea behind having an MOU with no attachments is to give consistency throughout the state for all the counties, so that everybody's MOU is the same?
Well, everyone's MOU is the same. The signing statements are basically stating that the MOU as written is, could be considered an unconscionable contract, because there was some collaboration in developing the MOUs after they had been drafted, after they had been reviewed by DHHS legal counsel and the Attorney General's Office. So counties are feeling pressed to get their needs met in the MOUs, because as we understand it, a memorandum of understanding, there should be mutual consent, and that's really not what occurred here.
Counties weren't given the opportunity to help build and craft the MOU. It was crafted and sent to us to sign. And it has standards in it that have large implications for us, from the standpoint of coming in and taking over our agency, because we don't meet standards for three months consecutively, or five out of 12, which is a pretty low standard. And basically, the signing statement says, "If you want to help us identify goals and give us the resources to meet those goals, great, that's what we're all about." But when you set these standards that we cannot guarantee you we can meet, because they involve outside behaviors, we can't control a lot of placement issues with regard to children. You need to know this upfront, that these are the problems we see with this agreement already. And, and if you want to help us, great, help us, but don't just tell us this is what we have to do, and if we don't do it, you're going to come take us over, or worse, withhold our money.
Yeah, that's the point.
Yeah, and this is, and if I understand correctly, this is a state agency saying they're going to withhold federal funds. So this is a, this is federal money coming through the state, and then they're the funnel, and they're going to, they're going to choke it down to where they're setting standards for us, and then they're going to withhold federal funds from the agencies that actually deliver the services. Sorry, that's my soapbox, but...
I think you need to be on a soapbox for this, Donna. Do we have, did you make any estimations, looking back a year, as to how we would do with these new rules?
I think that we're going to do fine with timeliness for food and nutrition services and Medicaid. We have a monthly report card, and we are achieving those outcomes. The child welfare, the permanence, we're going to struggle with, and the child support, we're going to struggle in meeting. Though, our child support team and division is regarded as one of the 10 best in the state, but we're still not going to meet those outcomes.
Thank you.
It would seem to me that we are at the lowest unemployment rate that we've had in many, many, many years, and you still can't meet their expectations in collections for support?
No, sir. And we take thousands of cases to court within a fiscal year. We have that data. I don't have it before me, but we collect that and present it to our board on a monthly basis.
Well, Donna, what I'm hearing, this borderlines extortion, because it's simply either you sign this document, or you don't get any money. And we can't take care of our services if we don't have the finances to do it, so we're kind of like, and they're saying, "Either you sign this document, and don't send me anything else to go along with it expressing your concerns, you just sign this document, or we cut your money off." And they say that's legal?
There has been discussion that the state does not know if they have the authority to withhold federal funds.
I'd like to know that.
But how much, what percent of the total funds are state?
Less than 10% for child welfare. Is it 50/50 for food, nutrition, and Medicaid?
But still, that's a significant number when you're looking at...
Yes. And I'm sorry, 75% for Medicaid now.
So what we, Mike, do you have something?
What was, and I, maybe I missed it in that whole presentation, but what was the reason they did all this?
I'm sorry, you didn't hear a question?
What was the main reason they did all this? I probably missed it in there somewhere.
I believe that, and I've had sit-down conversations with the primary bill sponsor, she is a strong advocate for children, and she was a former foster parent who adopted two children from the foster care system. And so what she wants is quality services and equity across all 100 counties. And currently, the services are based upon the county resources available to provide those services. So one of her, her philosophies and her beliefs is if she can hold, she wants to hold all counties accountable to a certain level, which is great, and I'm, I'm all for, but you also have to raise the resources to make them equitable across all counties. But that is the underlying issue.
So is, so she's from Wake? Is that what I heard?
She is.
So does Wake County have a problem with this, or are they going to meet all their standards?
All counties have a problem with some of these performance standards. We've, we've looked at the performance standards across all 100 counties, and no one is meeting all 100% of these performance measures. But again, based upon the REAP data, we don't know what their data sources are going to be, because they've not been defined and identified.
So is it possible that all counties are going to fail, and then they're just going to have a big mess on their hands?
Anything's possible.
I mean, is it, is it that, is it that, I don't know what the word is?
The permanence is definitely a problem across all counties. I think we saw one county that's meeting, of the counties that we looked at, there was one county that's meeting the permanence within 12 months. And some counties, remember, they may only have a foster care population of two. We have a foster care population of 140, and then we took 16 children into custody in the month of June. So we're growing.
So are the more, your counties are not going to have as much problems as the poorer counties, so what we're saying?
That is correct.
Now, can I give a little more background? Having been a state legislator, this bill was crafted in secret over many, many, many months, without department or county DSS input. And that's how you get a really bad bill. And then they put lipstick on the pig, and they said, "Oh, this is all about children and taking care of children." And because they put it through the process so fast, nobody really read it. And unfortunately, what this really is, is one legislator's personal desires for the system, which, from my perspective, looking at all this, is she wants it perfect, which is not achievable. And I'm really sorry to say that, watch DHHS, and I know they're between a rock and a hard place, too, in trying to put this out there, but I think, like Mike just said, I don't think anybody's going to make all of the measures, and it will be a ginormous mess. The problem is, is that, how much money are they going to take away from us, and how long is it going to take to get it back?
It's the best things ever, these cards that the manager gives us. I think I'm reading this right, that, is this part of Human Services?
Yes.
Twenty, about $30 million of our budget, which is about 20%. Does that sound right to you? It's 20% of our budget. So this community and others do a tremendous amount for those that are in need. You know, having said that, we expect excellence from that department. So that's a standalone statement. We expect that from you all, and what we can do to help that, we certainly want to. So it appears that there's, there are a couple of things. Number one, we need to find out who will sign the memorandum of understanding. Raise your hand if you'd like to do that. Okay.
I'll be glad to sign it. I just, I guess we want the board to know that we sign it, and, you know, six months from now, we get a lot of negative letters that we're failing this and failing that, that we kind of knew that we can't control. Go back to the, if, can you go back to the slide that's got the, I mean, we, you know, 41% of the children who enter foster care in 12 months are discharged to permanency with 12 months. I mean, you know, that could be to the detriment of the child. So, I mean, that's how ridiculous that particular performance measure is. So while, while we may, we may or may not meet it, but if, if we, if we don't meet it, and not meeting it means we're protecting the child, then, you know, so be it.
When does this...
Do we know what our, I'm sorry, do we know what our current period of time is, between the time a child comes in and she gets into a, she or he gets into a permanent home?
There is a range. We have some children who have been in custody five years without permanence, because there is no home identified who will take them because of behavioral issues or challenges that they may have.
So what do they want you to do? Put them out in the street?
No, we would continue providing services for them, but we would not meet, you know, the percentage, again...
Have any money, what are you going to do?
Well, that is one of the things that we have talked with our DHHS partners, in that they realize that withholding funds is not going to help improve a system.
Yep.
When does this, when does, go ahead, Jay.
I think the manager brings up a good point. If you look at it the other way, is what are people going to do to make their numbers? And that's the scary thing, is that you're putting professionals in a position of either losing funding or making decisions that are contrary to their own goals or their own inner moral compass, which is, if you, if you need three or four kids in permanency to reach 41%, what do you do? You know, do you push them into a bad situation to make your number? Or do you eat and lose the money, or have DSS threaten to come in and take you over because you didn't meet the 41%? And I think it places our professionals in extremely precarious and dangerous positions, professionally and morally. And I get, I get the, the goals, and I think what the signing statement says, if you read it in total, is if you want to set these as goals, and help us find and identify the funding and the ways to get there, that's what we all want. And so we're just giving you a heads up... all want. And so we're just giving you a heads up that we're going to sign the MOU, and we're going to be bound by the MOU, but we've identified problems. And so when these come up, you know, don't be surprised. And...
What is the date that this has to be signed by?
It was due last Friday. We have an extension through tomorrow.
Really? All right. So I'll make a motion, and I'll make the motion that we ask our county manager to be the party that signs the MOU. But I'd also like the county manager and the county attorney and yourself to draft a letter to go along with it.
I'll second the motion.
That outlines our concerns.
Would it be consistent with the signing statement that we've offered up?
Yes.
And if I may, since receiving feedback on Friday, I think we need to revise the state, number one, in the signing statement. The response, number one. Because she is interpreting, the secretary is interpreting that as county saying they cannot keep children safe, and that is not what Rowan County is saying. That's feedback we received Friday.
You can approve the signing statement substantially similar to what we've presented, and we'll stay within that guideline.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second. Should we, as a friendly, courtesy send copies of this letter also to all of our state representatives and senators, so they know our concerns?
I think it'd be great. It's a great idea.
Yes, sir. I think that's certainly something we need to do.
They should have seen it.
Yeah.
As they voted to pass it.
Well, I think he means the letter that we're sending.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Good idea. All right, motion, a second, other discussion. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board appointments. On the ABC board, Marnie Hendrick has applied for reappointment. Do we have a motion to accept that?
Nominate Marnie Hendrick.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
JCPC, let's see, Christopher Scott Flowers applied for reappointment. Carol Ann Hope has applied for reappointment to JCPC. Taron Lilly applied to fill the under-18 age vacancy. And Isaac Miller has applied to fill the vacancy as a member of the public. So those are four nominations. Do we have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Region F Aging Advisory Committee, Nancy Brand has applied for reappointment as a delegate member. So do we have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's one alternate member vacancy on the Region F Advisory Committee. Juanita Woods has applied for reappointment as an alternate member. So a motion to accept her?
No.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Below that, Sherry Keller has also applied to fill, now we have in there, it's called alternate member, but that's not the case. There is one opening for a delegate member, and our clerk reached out and asked if she would be willing to fill a delegate member spot instead of alternate, and she said yes. So do we have a motion to accept Sherry Keller as a delegate member?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Rowan County, we have 34 openings currently. So we would encourage you to get involved in your community, and go to our website and take a look and see what, what boards interest you. And we would, we would beg you to, to get involved in that. We need good folks, and we got lots of good folks out there. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A happy Fourth.